Okay, we are on Facebook Live. I'm gonna go check my phone to make sure. If you're watching this live, if you will, please comment. That would help us. For any of the public, if you're watching us on Facebook Live, please give us a comment. We just sound check in real quick before our meeting gets started. Please comment, which you can hear us. That'd be great. I see our presses up here, Nicole and Miles. Thank you all. We're gonna start our meeting in just a minute. We're still getting a few issues worked out with sound, and we'll get ready to go. Thank you guys for being here on Facebook Live. Also, if you're calling in, listening, thank you.
Good evening. Welcome to the April 20th regular meeting of the Chawan County Board of Commissioners. We are conducting this meeting via telephone, conferencing, and live streaming. This is a first experience for our Board of Commissioners. As always, we appreciate the public's presence and interest, whether on the telephone, live streaming, or both. Please join us for the Pledge of Allegiance, and then for the invocation by Commissioner Cummings. I, the United States of America, and to witness fans, one nation, under God, indivisible, with deep and justice for all.
Let us pray. God in heaven, we come before you. Only asking for mercy. Holy Spirit, help us stay focused and pray to those who are in places of authority and in our government. Give us the grace to rebuild the spiritual walls of the United States of America. Send us a spiritual awakening. It is in his name that we pray. Amen.
Can't hear Patty. Before we begin with this evening's agenda, I wish to recognize the extraordinary time commitments of our clerk to the board Suzanne Stallings and the county's dual-hatted emergency manager and IT director Cordell Palmer. Since our last meeting on March 16, when we met together in our usual location and fashion, Suzanne and Cord have devoted a great deal of research and work to get everything in place to be able to hold tonight's meeting. Outstanding efforts on their part. And we commissioners, in particular, greatly appreciate their work. They, of course, have had their own work along with all of the extra duties with the COVID-19. So, thank you to them. Also want to recognize our county attorney Lauren Wamboldt for crafting the very first policy and rules of procedure for electronic meetings, which the board will consider for approval in short order. Finally, on behalf of the board, I want to express our appreciation to Chawan County residents for the decision that you've made to follow the governor's stay-at-home and social distancing orders. Scientific data tells us that these mitigating measures that you're doing are making a difference in slowing the spread of the virus. We're grateful for the dedicated service of our first responders and healthcare professionals who are truly heroes fighting against this plague. As commissioners, our number-one responsibility is to protect the public health and safety. It is also our responsibility to protect our local economic viability. We must do both, save lives and livelihoods. Our business owners and their employees are making huge sacrifices because of something that they had no control over. Reality is, businesses cannot stay closed indefinitely. We need a plan to put Chawan County and eastern North Carolina back to work as soon as possible. We look to our governor and his administration to lead and share a carefully phased, smart, and careful reopening plan based on our regional health data so we can safely and responsibly transition our economies back to full operation. We'll begin with a roll call. The clerk will take role and will also explain the procedures for motions and how to be recognized for the meeting. Madam Clerk.
Commissioners, first, I'm gonna do a roll call. I will call your names. Have to individually unmute your microphone. And we discuss the procedure for raising your hand if you wish to make a motion. If you have not been recognized by the floor, we discuss ways to notify me. You can put the yellow paper that you hold up, or you can also text my phone just to let me know that you need to be recognized. But I do have Brandon Chofer here to help me with monitoring that as well as controlling the microphone. So first, I'm gonna call your names, and I'll just ask for here and just these answer present. Mr. Kirby?
Present.
Finance Officer Kathy Smith? I've unmuted you. Kathy Smith?
Present.
Commissioner Fairclough?
Present.
Commissioner Lawrence?
Present.
Commissioner Bonner?
Present.
County Manager Howard?
Present.
Commissioner McLaughlin?
Yes, I'm here.
County Attorney Lauren Wamboldt?
Present.
Chair Patty Kersey?
Present.
Commissioner Ron Cummings?
Present.
Next, we'll approve the draft agenda. Commissioners, you've received the agenda. If there are no additions or corrections, I'll accept a motion to approve.
Commissioner Kirby?
So moved.
All in favor, raise your hand.
I'm gonna do an individual roll call. But, Commissioner Kirby?
Yes.
Commissioner Fairclough?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Lawrence?
Yes.
Commissioner Bonner?
Yes.
Commissioner McLaughlin?
Yes.
Chair Kersey?
Yes.
Commissioner Cummings?
Yes.
That was unanimous.
Next, we'll have a discussion by our attorney on the policy and rules of procedure for electronic meetings. Ms. Wamboldt?
Thank you. In your packet, you received a copy of the draft policy and rules of procedure for electronic meetings for Chawan County. This is a combination of multiple policies that were being drafted and adopted across the state. And I took several and combined them to what I thought would best serve Chawan County. You will see at the beginning that the real purpose of this is for when we are in a state of emergency and we're limited circumstances such as we are experiencing right now with COVID-19. Ideally, and best practice is always that the board will meet in person and/or have the ability to have a physical forum when possible. However, as our recent times have shown us, it's not always going to be possible, at least not right now. So, if you will, I assume you've been through it, but the purpose of this policy is to define the type of meetings we're talking about, the conditions necessary for this policy to be in effect. And it sets forth the requirements for notice, statutory requirements for special notice when we are having an electronic meeting like this. There's been, Chair Kersey started the meeting out by thanking Suzanne and Cord for all their work for the electronic meeting. And it has been quite a task and undertaking, particularly with all my legal pokes and prods, which is, well, we gotta do this. But if we do that, we need to do this. And if we do it this way, we have to make sure it's streamlined here. But we also have to have a phone call. And I know that it can be, it has been quite an undertaking. And the reason for that is we have all these legal hoops we have to jump through. And open meetings law in North Carolina, we still have to comply with it, which is why we are streaming live on Facebook. We have a number for the public to call in if they don't have internet access. So, we are trying to be as open as possible and under the circumstances. The policy also includes where the public can go and view and/or call in and listen to the meeting. It talks about the calculation of the forum, the process for opening a meeting, public comment, voting, and discussion. And you saw that kind of in our first motion there to approve the agenda. Everyone has to answer because not everyone can possibly see you. I think right now, we have one commissioner whose video is not streaming. However, he is participating in the meeting. So, we need a verbal confirmation. So, it's gonna take us a little longer to move through our motions and our votes. But that is just kind of par for the course for electronic meeting. I've kind of did an overview. So, if you have any specific questions, I'll be happy to answer them. But generally, the biggest piece is that you have to remember everything we are doing has to be also verbally done. The motions, Suzanne is probably gonna take extra care to repeat them, more so than if you're in the meeting and physically in the meeting. Because if you are able to be physically present, it's a little easier to understand what's going on versus just over the phone, if that's the only way the public can access. So, if you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer them. Otherwise, I think this is a good policy and rules of procedure. I think just like anything else, we put something in place and we actually put it to work. You know, maybe in the future, there's some things we need to update or change. But I think this is a great starting point for us.
Okay. Thank you very much. If there are no questions or further discussion, I'll entertain a motion to approve the procedures and rules for electronic meetings.
Commissioner McLaughlin has raised his hand.
Yes, I have raised my hand. I move to accept these recommendations that have been proposed by the small board.
Thank you. The motion is to approve. The clerk will take role.
Commissioner Kirby?
Aye.
Commissioner Cummings, you had your hand raised. Did you have a question?
Not now.
Okay. The record will reflect that Commissioner Cummings voted yes. Commissioner Fairclough?
Yes.
Commissioner Lawrence?
Yes.
Commissioner Bonner?
Yes.
Chair Kersey?
Yes.
That was unanimous.
Thank you. Item four, public comment. Madam Clerk, have you received any comments from the public to read into the record?
I checked our voicemail at 5:20, and I checked my email again just before we got the decision that I have not received any color. Be ready.
Very good. Item five, the consent agenda. Item A includes the minutes of the March 4, 2020 EMS 911 Assessment Committee, the March 9, 2020 Joint Schools Committee Meeting, and the March 16, 2020 Board of Commissioners Meeting. If there are no corrections or comments, I'll accept a motion to approve.
Commissioner Bonner has raised his hand.
Move to approve.
Motion is to approve. I'll call the vote. Commissioner Kirby?
Aye.
Commissioner Fairclough?
Yes.
Commissioner Lawrence?
Yes.
Commissioner McLaughlin?
Yes.
Chair Kersey?
Yes.
Commissioner Cummings?
Yes.
That was unanimous.
Thank you. Item six, our budget amendments. Ms. Smith will report.
Thank you. Good evening, commissioners. We have six budget amendments tonight. The first one is Budget Amendment Number 1920-052, and it's to amend the budget for DSS to include professional services for staffing and legal fees. And no additional funding is being requested. We are transferring between line items. The next one is 1920-053, and this is to amend the budget to include discretionary income through the month of March. And the total discretionary income received year-to-date is $156,912.67. Number 1920-054 is to amend the budget for TDA to include their co-op income through the month of March. Number 1920-055 is to amend the budget for tax administration to include attorney fees and for legal fees for ZK's legal. Number 1920-056 is to amend the budget to include grant funding for the stream debris removal grant. And this is for soil and water. And the last one is 1920-057, and this is to amend the budget for the animal shelter. And this is reclassing part-time salaries to full-time. And this is correcting a key puncher when the budget was entered into Keystone. And so, there's no additional funding. It's strictly a transfer between line items. And that's it, unless any of you have any questions.
Any questions for Ms. Smith? If not, we'll accept a motion.
Commissioner Fairclough?
Yeah, I'd like to make the motion that we approve of all budget amendments.
The motion is to approve. Clerk will call role.
Commissioner Kirby?
Aye.
Commissioner Lawrence?
Yes.
Commissioner Bonner?
Yes.
Commissioner McLaughlin?
Yes.
Chair Kersey?
Yes.
Commissioner Cummings?
Yes.
That was unanimous.
Thank you. Item seven, our tax refunds. Who will be giving this report? Oh, okay. All right, item eight. This is a FEMA designation of applicant's agent. In accordance with the North Carolina Division of Emergency Management and FEMA Guidelines, and in order to apply for funds, commissioners must approve the resolution, which is at your tab eight. Are there any questions? Or is county manager planning on giving any more details? Ms. Smith, do you have any more detail? She's gonna get a note. Any questions from commissioners? Any comments? And if not, I'll accept a motion.
Commissioner Cummings?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the resolution designation of applicant's agent.
Motion is to approve. The clerk will call role.
Commissioner Kirby?
Aye.
Commissioner Fairclough?
Yes.
Commissioner Lawrence?
Yes.
Commissioner Bonner?
Yes.
Commissioner McLaughlin?
Yes.
Chair Kersey?
Yes.
That was unanimous.
Item nine, water department fees assessed prior to March 31st. That'll be county manager?
Yes, ma'am. Governor Cooper, this is a second order that didn't allow for utilities to assess fees or new cutoffs until the end of March, excuse the end of April. And our last bill went out the end of March, March 26th. The exact, what we're asking is the board to allow us to waive those fees and charges for that final bill in March, March 26th. It'd be an expensive moment of what the governor's done, but will allow us to, if other citizens may need it.
And just to clear, that's late fees or penalties, not just the cost of service.
Are there any questions for county manager or Ms. Wamboldt?
Commissioner Cummings has his hand raised.
Commissioner Cummings?
Yes, I was just wondering if those that pay, go ahead and pay now. I mean, we can still pay, correct?
That's correct. This other stuff was just waived penalties, cutoff fees and any interest we may have charged. So, the bill will move forward. They'll still have to pay the bill itself. Just won't be accessed any additional fees.
Okay, I just wondered. So, when a person gets a bill and they pay it right away, there wouldn't be any fees. But this is for people that are not able to make the payment right away, and there will not be any excessive fees.
That's correct.
All right, thank you.
Commissioner McLaughlin has his hand raised?
Yes, I, just for clarification, I'm not quite sure if I understand 100%. And if the fees get waived, are they still have to be paid? In other words, it's waived for the month. Does that mean it's still on the books and they can pay at a later date? Or is it excused?
The fees would be excused, which is the way interest and the cutoff fees and the interest would be excused for March. And then the governor has issued a second order that would excuse them for the month of April. So, what we're asking is just go back and do that. Because our bill, the bill went out and were due right at the, or cutoff was right at the end of March, when the governor did his order. So, we just want to make that part of that, part of that, because it came right at the same time.
Right.
And we can't, only the board can waive these or excuse these fees.
Okay. But the bill, the initial bill is still liable for payment.
That's true.
Okay. Thank you.
Commissioner Cummings has his hand raised? Commissioner McLaughlin has his hand raised?
No.
Okay.
All right. If there are no further questions for county manager, I will accept a motion.
Commissioner Bonner?
Move to the line. We accept the water department fees assessed prior to March 31st.
Motion is to accept. The clerk will read the rule.
Commissioner Kirby?
Aye.
Commissioner Fairclough?
Yes.
Commissioner Lawrence?
Yes.
Commissioner McLaughlin?
Yes.
Chair Kersey?
Yes.
Commissioner Cummings?
Yes.
Just a reminder to put your hand back down unless you had a question, you can raise your. That was unanimous.
Great. Item 10, finance officer report. Ms. Smith?
Yes, you have in your packet of financials through the month of March. And I'm not gonna really go over this in detail other than I just wanted to point out on the last page for the cash and investment summary that the cash decreased from February to March due to, we made a debt service payment, which caused the decrease. And I just wanted to point that out. But otherwise, unless, hopefully, you've had a chance to review it. So, if any of you have any questions, I'll be glad to answer them.
Any questions for Ms. Smith? If not, we'll go to the next item. And that would be the external board and committee reports. Any board reports?
Commissioner Kirby?
Thank you, Chair Kersey. Just to report that we actually have been, some of the committees that I serve on have been meeting during this difficult time. The DSS board had a meeting last week. And we actually met at the Social Services Building. And some of us were there. Building, and, uh, some of us were there, some of us were met remotely. The long and the short is that we, they have geared up, they are ready, they are there to serve the population, and they're there to serve our constituents. Director Dowdell is hitting the ground, uh, and her, and her finger moving fast. There is a anticipated, and I think we're already seeing it from news reports, an anticipated increase in applications for services from the board, specifically in the area of, uh, for food stamps or SNAP or whatever, whatever the current acronym for that sort of thing is. She's taking, we're taking care of those applications. They have got a, um, station set up outside of the building in Portico, so that we, they can maintain social distancing outside, and it seems to be working very well. Also, last Thursday, the Alamoar Commission Board met remotely, and, uh, the staff there is very well-prepared, and, uh, their activities, the most notable for them at this point is the Meals on Wheels program. They are still doing that. They've done away with the congregate meals, where they, they used to bring them to the seniors that are so that several people could eat at one time. They are bringing them to individuals, and they have put out a request, a plea for volunteers to support that program, so if there's anybody listening on Facebook and who has a, um, has the time and the willingness to serve, please by all means let us know. You can let, of course, the clerk know, you can let me know, uh, just make, make it known that you're available to do that, and we will put you in touch with the right folks at the Alamoar Commission, and we'll, it's, it's very rewarding. It's, this is the time when we all need to strap up and do our part for the community. And finally, uh, one of the, uh, major, uh, issues that we've drawn focus to with schools being closed and parents trying to get their kids' schoolwork done is the lack of broadband internet access in many parts of this county, especially the far, farther northern sections and the farther southern sections, the areas away from Edington proper, um, of course. As everyone knows, your schoolwork is now of necessity being done remotely. It's being done by way of, uh, internet access, and we've got people who are having to drive to remote sites in order to access that broadband internet. We have been in, in contact with and communication with, I participated a couple of weeks ago with a call-in to, uh, Representative Greg Murphy. He and his staff put a, a telephone conference together, and I actually had the opportunity towards the end of that conference to specifically ask a question, looking for some federal support to rural counties such as Chilwan County, to do anything they can to increase broadband internet access to us. Chair Kersey and I have also met with representatives of the Alamoar Commission and, and other counties within, uh, North Carolina, and, and also County Manager Kevin Howard participated, and we are putting together a task force to push opportunities for expanding broadband internet in the county. That's all I have. Thank you.
Any other Board Reports? Ms. McLaughlin?
Yes, I just wanted to report that the CIP Committee, we're on track to, um, be prepared for the budget cycle, but with the COVID-19, our schedule has been thrown out of whack a little bit. As you all know, in your packet this week was an evaluation of some of the projects that we are tracking, and if you take the time to get that filled out, and back to Suzanne or Kathy, um, by this Wednesday, it'll help us to, um, begin to, uh, understand what we have, so I just wanted to report on that. Thanks.
Ms. Lawrence, did you have your hand up first?
Yes. Uh, back to what Commissioner Kirby was talking about there as far as the broadband. I think at this point, if we put force method, when I talk about it, budget time, put force method here to show that we are promoting broadband and trying to, uh, on the financial end, do something to improve our broadband, uh, I think it would make a great showing. In addition, I would like if they pull together a task force for broadband, my potential would like to be a part of it. Thank you.
Any other Board or Committee Reports? If not, we'll move into the Manager's Report.
I have a few items. Um, one, in your packet, you have just dated, um, projects, um, list, um, I want to touch a few of those. One, the, all our projects are still on schedule. The DF Walker Innovations for the Boys and Girls Club is still on schedule to be completed by the end of May, um, worst cases, by the half of the first part of June, we're, we're looking for, hopefully, the end of May. The Ag Building, that we talked, the architect, they've been out, the engineer's been out, they're looking at the AC system as part of, of, of replacing the roof there, um, should have a proposal from them in the next week or so. Same with the library. We have, he's been out looking at that building, working on a proposal for that, removing that rear door and installing a window. We've also, beginning the library, the, uh, part-time personnel you approved a couple months ago, has been working on the library, doing repairs there on the outside, but we've had, uh, had some time to do that. Those projects are moving forward. The, uh, school project, we want to talk about that a little bit, the new high school. We had a conference call a week and a half ago, um, it was myself, our bond counsel, the financial advisor, and a representative in the school system discussed the project. There's a lot of updates coming up over the next, well, in the month of June, especially, um, we have to have two public meetings, and both meetings in June and then, uh, so the gist of that meeting, um, was discuss how to move forward with that, and see what possible move forward with that, as we're faced with stay-home orders and social distancing with part of the COVID-19 outbreak. What we came out of that meeting was, is the bond council felt very strongly that if we're still under this type of situation, we should not move forward with any types of public meetings or hearings, um, where the public cannot be involved in person, ask questions and get information. So what we did was left it out to see how things move forward. I did find out that the bond council, the last drop-dead date they have from moving forward will be May 15th, it would need two weeks to get the stuff ready for the first meeting in June to start that process. So, um, in our first meeting in May, we will be discussing that, and whether or not we can move forward as part of this, as things are tipping up under COVID-19. A lot of states have already extended their stay-home orders through May into June. Ofga has not done that yet, that's something we'll be watching and trying to keep up with. And then the last thing I was going to mention, I sent you an email last week about the water plant, issues with the, uh, rine tank. We have, uh, we have found someone to take the sock out of that, so we're going to get that open this week and be able to assess that tank and see what, how we can make repairs to that and get things ready to go. Does anybody have any questions about it?
I have, uh, all right, your hand is up. Did you have a question? Ms. Lawrence, did you?
No, not my hands. I'll put a next question.
Answered. Ms. McLaughlin, did you have a question?
No. Did I not? I have a question.
I, I have a question, Manager. The Boys and Girls Club monthly construction update, uh, construction is still on schedule. When is the construction scheduled to be completed?
I'm going by mail, I haven't written it for me, but it's the first couple of weeks in June is supposed to be completed. What we're hoping is it will be finished by the end of May, but we should have a, the schedule calls for a certificate of occupancy by the middle of June that lays.
Thank you. I have one other question for you. The Dude Solutions, I recall that we were having some problems and a representative was supposed to meet with the maintenance director. Is that meeting happening?
We were trying to set up a conference call with that. I'm not, I don't think it's happened yet. We kind of got sidetracked, we're preparing for the COVID-19, maintenance is doing some next thing and stuff. I will check on that and, um, get it up tomorrow, let me answer that question.
Great, thank you. Ms. Kirby?
Uh, thank you, uh, Chair Kersey. Kevin, along the lines of the question that Chair Kersey just asked about the Boys and Girls Club, um, and I'm asking this question now as a, of course, a representative of the taxpayers, are we going to anticipate that we will begin collecting rent on that facility from the Boys and Girls Club on or about the 1st of July?
Yes, sir. The, the contract calls that the first option should be made within 30 days of receipt of occupancy. But what I'm hoping is we actually get a payment, um, this month, not this month, but the last, in June, the last month of the fiscal year.
Great. Thank you.
If there are no further questions on the, uh, update sheet, we'll move on to, oh, were you finished, Mr. Manager, with all your items?
Yes.
We'll move on to timely and important matters.
I just wanted to thank the public for participating in the Facebook Live. Um, if you have any issues with the sound or any suggestions, we certainly welcome your feedback. Hopefully, this is not going to be a regular thing, we'll be able to get back together soon, but if you have any comments or feedback, please, um, message me on Facebook or email them to me, I'll come directly. Appreciate it.
Commissioner Lawrence has his hand raised?
Ms. Lawrence?
Yeah. In reference to the not having the video, from what I picked up here, it appears to be outdated driver. Rather than mess up the meeting there, I downloaded a new driver here, and I think that's going to solve the problem.
Terrific.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, uh, one of the benefits of doing my office is I pulled the schedule down for the Boys and Girls Club. This, we should have a certificate of occupancy by June 3rd, the first part of June, and we're on schedule for that. I actually asked in the last meeting we had, um, if the virus, the shut it affecting anything as far as deliveries, and they said no, everything is on schedule. We don't foresee any issues.
Commissioner Lawrence, your hand is up. Did you have a question?
Yeah, I forgot to put it down.
Okay.
Okay. If there are no other reports or comments, I will accept a motion to adjourn.
Commissioner Cummings has raised his hand.
Commissioner Cummings?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Motion is to adjourn. The clerk will call rule.
Commissioner Kirby?
Aye.
Commissioner Fairclough?
Yes.
Commissioner Lawrence?
Yes.
Ms. Bonner?
Yes.
Ms. McLaughlin?
Yes.
Chair Kersey?
Yes.
That was unanimous.
Thank you.